All right, thank you, everybody. Sorry for the delay. City of Salem, City Council Committee on Public Health, Safety and Environment, co-posted with the Committee of a Whole, will meet in person on Thursday, November 2nd, 2023, at 7:12, started about 6:30 PM, for the purpose of discussing an ordinance amendment to add it to a new section, 31, Chapter 24, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions. This meeting will be held in City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, 2nd floor. In-person shall be the primary method for accessing such meetings. A secondary method of public access may be provided, if technology feasible, through Salem Access Television, and remotely through Zoom. See below for SATV, with a link provided below, password 246464, or the telephone number provided. Any persons requiring auxiliary aids for effective communication will do so with interpreter, with the ADA compliance coordinator. The agenda tonight. We have an ordinance amendment, which we just fairly read. "No person shall sell, use, or distribute any type of balloon, including but not limited to plastic, latex, Mylar balloons inflated with any type of gas, including air, including but not limited to helium gas. No person shall dispose of any balloon in any manner, including by release into the air, other than being contained in a plastic trash bag transported to the city's contracted services. Any person violating this bylaw shall be fined a noncriminal disposition of $50 per offense. This bylaw may be enforced by any police officer in the city of Salem." Tonight, we have all members of the committee, and joining us from the Committee of a Whole, we have Councillor Prozniewski. In the room, I'd also like to recognize some of our city's staff. We have Janelle Rolk, our Waste Reduction Coordinator. And so, to give a little background on why we're here and why we're talking about this, about two years ago, myself, Councillor Stott, and Barbara Warren, had a conversation about this. And when it comes to inflated balloons, we do have an issue, as we are a seacoast town and city, I'm sorry. So, just to give a little background, the towns that have adopted a measure like this, Nantucket, Provincetown, Chatham, and Harwich, including Newton, that has a little bit of a different ordinance that they just proposed a couple of weeks ago. And there's also a bill, an act relative to helium balloons, that was filed by State Rep. Sarah Peake in 2019 of Provincetown, and is still being reviewed in the Joint Committee of Environment, Natural Resources, and Agriculture. So, just to give a little bit of clarity to this, if passed, this ban would ban the sale of distribution, sale and release of any type of balloon, including but not limited to plastic, latex, Mylar filled with any type of lighter-than-air gas, both for public and private use. Again, violated will be fined $50 of fine. This ordinance would not apply to scientific balloons released by the federal or state-level governments, and hot-air balloons. While the law, if approved, would shoot down traditions at weddings, parties, and other celebrations, inflated balloons, to be clear, wildlife experts and researchers say ending this practice of ceremoniously releasing balloons into the sky could help cut down on the environmental pollution. NOAA Fisheries guidance on their website, and I quote, "It can feel joyful to release them up into the sky, watch them soar unfettered into the atmosphere, where they vanish into the ether," except they don't. Experts say that balloons ultimately turn into trash oftentimes adrift at sea, where many animals get tangled or eat the debris, which can ultimately choke them and eventually lead to starvation. Mylar is a bright color of rubber, and latex balloons, for example, can look a lot like jellyfish to sea turtles, who will move in and chom down on their desired prey, according to NOAA. The agency also said between 2008 and 2016, 280,000 balloons were found in the United States during the Ocean Conservancy's annual beach cleanup. The number breaks down to an average of about 31,000 balloons a year. It seems, and we'll kind of, so, concerning our businesses here, however, I know a lot of people aren't keen on this proposal, and I somewhat understand. However, this is an environmental issue, and we should take, that should take precedence over convenience. And also, when it comes to materials used for celebration and events, we need to be mindful of reuse of the materials, and their also ability to be recycled or composted. I believe that some of our traditions are meant to float away into the sunset, including balloons filled with gas, pun intended. After, and I will wrap this up. I just got into a balloon hole here, because we had to really look into just the history of balloons and how they came about. So, we do have a history of inflatables. Humans have intentionally filled bladders, especially actual animal bladders, with air since prehistory. In ancient Greece, these had a number of recorded uses. The Aztecs inflated cat intestines to make shapes to present them as sacrifices to the gods. And by the 18th century, people were inflating balloons of cloth and canvas with hot air and sending aloft. The Magnifico Brothers going so far as to experiment with animals, first with animals in 1782, meaning like inflate balloons and actually let them out and see how long, how fast they go, quickly they go up, sorry. And then, when the altitude did not kill them, human beings were subject to this in 1783. The first hydrogen-filled gas balloon was flown in the 1790s, a century after the first hydrogen-filled weather balloons were launched in France. The first modern rubber balloons on record were made by Michael Faraday in 1824, where he used them to contain gases, where he was experimenting with especially hydrogen. And by 1825, similar balloons were being used and sold by Thomas Hancock. But like Faraday's, they came disassembled in two circles of soft rubber. The reason I bring this up is, we do have a tradition here with balloons, whether it be celebration, but back in the day, they were made out of materials that weren't necessarily, they wouldn't break down. Mylar, even biodegradable latex takes a long time to break down. And obviously, we have the issue with our wildlife. So, with that, any questions from the councillors? Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Varela. So, just a correction that the previous iterations of balloons did break down, but they weren't harmful to the environment or any species. And although I used to be a big fan of the Magnifico Brothers, I was hoping that you could perhaps, before we move further, read Barbara Warren's statement?
Yes, so, when, you know what, let's just do it. If, I could recognize Janelle Rolk, and she will explain her position, and obviously Barbara Warren's letter. Thank you, Janelle.
Thank you. I am Janelle Rolk, Waste Reduction Coordinator for the city. Barbara Warren, who is the Executive Director of Salem Sound Coast Watch, submitted the following statement. Salem Sound Coast Watch has long been in support of banning the release of helium balloons, in hopes that the Salem City Council will approve this ordinance amendment. We all know the harm plastic pollution causes in our environment. Balloons can look like jellyfish. Since sea turtles feed almost exclusively on jellyfish, balloons are easily mistaken for food. Once ingested, the damage can become fatal. Birds and mammals can also become tangled in balloons and their strings, preventing them from feeding, strangling them, and/or causing them to drown. We are always finding balloons and strings during our cleanups. Yesterday, at a coastal cleanup, one of the volunteers, who is a sailor, told me how they find balloons in the water off our coast as well. We would also like to call attention to balloon pintos filled with Mylar confetti, that seem to have become more popular recently. We know of at least three occasions since last April in downtown, Winter Island Park, and Salem Willows. Tiny pieces of Mylar or plastic are scattered widely. In April 2023, we were alerted that hundreds of Mylar pieces ranging from a quarter to one inch in size, covered an area of 130 feet by 40 feet, on the coastal bank overlooking Cat Cove. One second to pop, hours spent picking up the pollution by someone else. Then Barbara provided a blog post referring to that incident. It is easy to find so many articles calling for the action proposed with this ordinance. I've selected pertinent paragraphs from just two web articles to share with you on the following page. Thank you for your consideration in this ordinance. Sincerely, Barbara Warren, Executive Director, Salem Sound Coast Watch.
Thank you.
Would you like to know?
Sure.
Okay. This is the US Beach Town Bans Balloons to Save Ocean, February 23rd, 2023. Balloons are a double whammy for the environment. First, there's the latex itself, which can be eaten by marine mammals and sea turtles. When ingested, latex balloons are 32 times more likely to kill seabirds than hard plastic, making them the deadliest type of marine debris for seabirds. This is because latex balloons are made from a soft, malleable material that can easily conform to a bird's stomach cavity or digestive tract, says Lara O'Brien, a contractor with NOAA's Office for Coastal Management, causing obstruction, starvation, and death. While manufacturers claim that some latex balloons are biodegradable, there are no safe balloons to release, O'Brien says, as they have added plasticizers that hinder the biodegradation process, and can take decades or longer to break down. The next article, Why Balloon Releases Don't Honor Your Loved One the Way You Would Think. This was published April 26, 2018. What Really Happens When Balloons Are Released? To their credit, most people don't realize what happens after their balloons float out of sight. It's easy to think that they simply disappear, because in the moment, that's what they do. But unfortunately, that's not how it works. After they're out of sight, 90% to 95% of latex balloons rise to an altitude of five miles. At that height, both the temperature and atmospheric pressure fall dramatically, which causes the helium in the balloon to expand. Eventually, the latex also freezes, shatters, and falls back to earth, along with any string and plastic attachments. The remaining 5% to 10% of balloons that don't reach the altitude either burst into large fragments or float many miles before descending back to the land or sea semi-inflated. The damage they cause when balloons return to earth, they are indiscriminate, not only in where they land, but in who and what they impact. When the string lands in trees, wires, and poles, birds and other wildlife can become tangled and strangled.
Thank you, Janelle. Real quickly, I just wanted to recognize, from the Committee of a Whole, we have Councillor Dominguez and Councillor McCarthy. Thank you, Janelle. I wanted to quickly talk about that. You know, just to let everyone know about this ordinance, this is specifically discussion about inflated balloons. We will not be taking away the right for any retailer to sell balloons that are not inflated with an air, with a gas. So, basically, it's only about balloons that are inflated with helium, if you're purchasing them. We're not taking away the ability for you to go to Walmart, pick up balloons that are not inflated in a helium tank, just to make it clear. Any councillors with any comments? Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair Varela. I just want to doubly bring attention to the fact that the language I submitted to the council originally included all inflated balloons, including those inflated with air. And what we're considering tonight has been amended to include, to only include balloons that are inflated with gases which are lighter-than-air, which would float away on their own. I think it's an important distinction for people to understand. That was a change that was made off books, so to speak, in between our meetings, so people may be responding to one and not the other.
Yes, thank you for that. And after some diligence, that's where we ended up. After looking at the state law and what other cities and towns have done, it is unreasonable to include balloons with air. This is really about the environmental concern, which is helium. Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Varela. You know, sometimes humans are a little bit arrogant, and we feel like whatever we do, you know, so what? I remember when I was younger, I saw a special about the plastics in the Pacific, where some people may know there's like a whole ocean of plastic. However, there was one island, and when they got to that island, very small island, all the albatrosses had died, and the main ingredient that killed them was balloons. So, I'm for this. I don't think it's going to limit people's enjoyment, and it's good for the environment and good for creatures that, you know, of no fault of their own are affected by this.
Councillor Watson-Felt?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question. Just for clarification, you're saying that a private citizen can purchase a helium tank, fill balloons with helium on their own manually, and use those balloons?
Correct.
Why are we not limiting the use of helium in balloons in Salem?
So, the understanding is, we effectively are. The issue is, if a business is offering a service of inflating helium balloons, I really believe that it comes down to, you know, who's, is the responsibility on, let me rephrase this. I don't think we can take away the ability to purchase a helium tank, and we cannot purchase, we cannot take away the ability to purchase a plastic material uninflated. It's really about, you know, the act of releasing balloons, which is something that, not to say is a tradition, but it's something that seems like it's acceptable to some. And we really want to discourage that. And you do make it a little more difficult for people to, they have to do the work themselves if they have to inflate them, and they might be a little more responsible.
Thanks, councillor. One more point, then. With regards to the wording of the amendment, "No person shall sell, distribute, and release any type of balloon, including and not limited to plastic latex Mylar filled with any type of lighter-than-air gas, both for public, private, and is hereby prohibited." I would recommend, before this comes back to council, that we divide the selling and distribution from the releasing, so that we also make it illegal for private citizens to release helium-filled air balloons. Does that make sense? Because right now, it's tied in with the retailer, the releasing is. At least, that's how I'm reading it. And so, it may make sense to have two separate sentences there.
That's fine with me.
All right, thanks.
Councillor Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Varela. Yes, I also support this. I understand the environmental impact. And I do support it taking out the regular air, that that should still be allowed. I think that allows creativity in decor, and because you just don't have to have the balloons that will stay up independently. You can adhere to sticks, you can build, you know, you still have some creative leeway to create. And so, I do support taking out the, that the air, regular air would be banned as well. And I also support Councillor Watson-Felt's amendment, that it is a little confusion, confusing, because the sell and distribute is more for retailers, and then we could put, you know, the releasing of any type of balloons is more universal by everyone. So, I think we could use a little clarity here, yeah. But yes, I do support it. And I appreciate this coming in and all the due diligence that was done to inform us. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Anyone else from the council? Councillor Prozniewski?
Thank you, President. Chairman Varela, not being a member of the committee, allowing me to speak. It seems like, I don't think that anybody can argue that a balloon that's released into the atmosphere is a danger, potential danger. I think that that's what we should be concentrating on, is releasing balloons, not owning or having the ability to make balloons, but releasing them. It is a form of littering, which is against the law. I think that maybe putting an order into request the state to take a better look at state law, and an educational component in that about the releasing of balloons may go a little bit further than what we're doing here tonight. But I think that it's the release of the balloons that, releasing balloons should be, we should be concentrating on, not the owning of the balloons. But I do want to ask one question, because I'm a little ignorant on this. The helium that's used in that balloon, that has no potential danger to the environment, does it? I'm not the expert. Thank you.
It depends what hydrocarbon or fluorocarbon has a gas, but helium, I feel, is pretty inert, so I don't see there's any issue with helium.
Thank you.
And before I get to you, just a little clarity. So, I did have a conversation with the Legislative Director of Sarah Peake's office. And it seems like what has happened with the bill that was proposed in 2019, I did have a conversation with Bill Rennie of the Massachusetts Retailers Association today. And it seems like they're making a push to eliminate what the original wording was, to eliminate the sale of balloons, and focus on the releasing of balloons within educational component. So, there's two ways we can go about this. We want to really be firm about the sale of balloons, or do we do something that's really about an education component about the releasing of balloons? We all know that's the issue. It's just what has more teeth and what's going to prevent the release of the balloons? I think that's the question. Councillor Cohen, and then Councillor Watson-Felt?
Yeah, thanks, Chair Varela. Having sat in Ms. Rolk's position, you come to realize that a very small percentage of recyclables are actually recycled, and that too much of what people recycle, single-use plastics, you know, and other things, are either put in the wrong place and contaminate the load. So, I only look at this as a first step. It's not a perfect bill, because the bottom line is, there's still going to be a lot of balloons that are going to be dangerous for animals and our environment. And the fact that, you know, Barbara Warren identified that 100 times 40-foot strip, and I remember the post on Facebook was covered with this, these materials, is really disturbing. And it's people, too. I mean, this is, you know, our beaches and everything else. So, I know we're going to have public comment, but I will be in support of this going to the full council, just as a first step. And one last thing, we have really experienced, at least in the two, almost two years that I've been a councillor, a real problem with our legislature acting on anything. Not only, like, on the environmental side, I have testified like 12 times in the last two years on environmental bills that have not gone anywhere. As a body, we voted 11 to nothing to support the Green Future Act, which didn't go anywhere, which would have been the most significant climate policy in the history of the state by far. And we know that we can't count on the state legislature to really take bold enough action, because when you have, you know, hundreds of legislators with all different interests, they're not necessarily going to act in the same interest that coastal communities, for example, might be different than people who live in greenfields. So, I know we're going to have public comment, and then, you know, I'm also supportive of Councillor Watson-Felt's amendment. I just think that this is a good start. It's not going to prohibit people from having balloons in the short term and enjoying them, but it's going to have an impact on the environment that most people who use balloons or display balloons do not appreciate, not for any fault of their own, most of the time.
Thanks, Chair. So, the more I think about this, and the more I tease apart, I think, exactly what we're after here, which is really about keeping helium-inflated balloons out of the atmosphere and out of our oceans and off our lands, it seems to me, I can't believe I'm saying this, it seems to me like we actually need a different set of required controls around this. For my part, if a retailer wants to sell the service of delivering and inflating balloons inside of, you know, the ballroom at the Hawthorne, I have no problem with that. If it's really about containing these balloons, then I have to say, I cannot tell you how many I've seen accidentally let go of as people are struggling to get inflated balloons into their car outside the party store, and be, right? Like, that's where I almost wonder, about a third of the released balloons into our environment go is from the incapacity of the folks just like trying to manage large quantities of inflated balloons. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, what are you after tonight? Are we after, is this something we can continue to work? Because I think this needs a little bit of more tweaking.
Yes, before I get to you, Councillor McLean. Yeah, and just for the public's perspective here, we start with something a little more robust than what we're probably going to end up with. I know it scares a lot of people that like, we're really, how the ordinance was proposed was really had some teeth. And that's why we have these committee meetings, to really hone in what we're looking for. When it comes to the discussion of people transitioning from the store to their cars and losing balloons, one part of the Massachusetts retailers are in their education component is requiring weights on each balloon. I agree with that. I just don't know how well that would be implemented to each balloon. So, that's why we're having this conversation as far as the transition of A to B. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair Varela. Excuse me. From my point of view, the action that occurs by the average person after the point of sale, like the person getting into their car, like the individual leaving the grocery store with their kid who really wanted that balloon, which you know they're going to let go of in five seconds before you get in the car, because this is like a rite of passage for parents, right? The people who are leaving a function, right, and who are just like taking the favors or balloons that they found inside the function and are losing them on the way out. To me, that all speaks to the reason why we do, in fact, need to consider the sale of balloons, because you don't have really great controls downstream over this waste stream. Your point of action is upstream about when you are distributing and giving people access to these items. And so, from my point of view, the sale component is important, right? It is important to reduce the number of opportunities for people to have those kinds of moments of unintentional release. And I think, you know, as was stated by a couple of other people already, I think that still allows you to engage in the setting of decor. It still allows you to inflate and create, but just in a way where if I walk out of, I walk out of this space, and somebody lets go over this string, I can bend over and pick it up, and it's not gone.
Thank you, Councillor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Varela. The points I was going to make were just both made. That was exactly, you know, my thinking. It's, a lot of it is accidental. I really think it comes down to addressing the selling and distribution of them inflated, because they're going to go up. They just are. I even thought of the car thing, a dozen of those stuffed in the car. They don't all make it. So, I absolutely think, you know, selling and distributing has to be a component of this. And then also, language that they cannot be released. And I think we need all of that to make, to make it strong enough. And I understand, yeah, we can't, if some kind of business sells tanks, you know, you have that workaround. But I just can't see the average person who would pick up a dozen inflatable balloons, then all of a sudden, oh, well, I have to take a tank home, and do all that myself, going down that road. I think it will, yeah, I think this will do the job. I think, I think it will be effective. Like, like Councillor Cohen said, too, this is always the beginning. We can revisit, because we know we have, you know, a crisis out here. We have, we have an environmental crisis. But I do, I do feel good about this, just with a little bit of, you know, working the language. But yeah, that is my focus, the sale and distribution. But yeah, that, that is my focus, the sale and distribution and then also the release. And yeah, keeping an air. So like I said, we still have creativity and options for, for decor.
Thank you, Counselor. If there's no other questions from our counselors, I'd like to open up to public comment. We'll start with everyone in the audience. If you'd like to come up and come to the podium. Yeah, they, they, yeah, they're good. No questions.
Hi there. My name is Patty Sorrell and currently I'm a resident of Peabody. And my business, Balloon Designs, is in Peabody, but I started right here in Salem. I started out of my house, which was on 14 Manning Street. And when I outcrewed my house, I rented a warehouse to run my balloon business over on Grove Street. So I have a good history of working here in Salem and working with businesses in Salem. I deliver balloons for birthdays, get wells, happy anniversaries. I do balloons for Salem State University. I'm actually a Salem State College grad. But as a balloon professional for 32 years now, I've got a lot of opinions on this, of course. Been in, in the business for a long time. It's not just balloon decorators like me, but there are party stores, florists, grocery stores, convenience stores. The hospital gift shop sells balloons. Car dealerships display balloons frequently. So there's a lot of businesses you're going to be impacting if you ban a full-on sale of balloons. As a balloon professional, our practices and how we do business has evolved over the past 30 some odd years. We actually no longer support the release of balloons for weddings or funerals or any other memorial occasion. Responsible balloon professionals will always add weights to any helium balloons, helium bouquets. This is just our best practices that we as an industry always tell our members to abide by. A large portion of our business is creating decor that is air-filled. That means it doesn't float, it won't get released into the atmosphere. So if you are now contemplating only banning the helium balloons, it's better, but it's not enough. The wording of your ordinance is kind of crappy, sorry. It needs to be finessed. It needs to be a lot better. Let's see, what else do I have? It's my opinion that any balloon ban would have a negative effect on local small businesses. Plus it would just drive the Salem residents to the other cities to buy their balloons and bring them back. So the best you can do is worry about your city. Great, but they're still going to go to Party City on 114 in Peabody. They're still going to go to Stop &amp; Shop, which is on the Peabody-Salem line. They're going to go to Market Basket if, if, you know, in Damaris instead of Salem. It's just what they're going to do. All we are asking is that you rewrite the ordinance to prohibit the release of helium balloons and that all balloons here used in Salem are disposed of property properly so that none are ending up in any streams or the oceans. And that all and any helium balloon sold would be required to have a weight. And requiring them to have weights is not a difficult thing. Party City probably sells a weight for 79 cents. You can get them even less expensive enough. A little weight that'll hold down your Mylar balloon is going to cost pennies in addition to the balloon itself. So that is my opinion. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you Ms. Sorrell. Counselor President.
Thank you Chair Verella. I think after hearing everything, I think that maybe the council will entertain every written revision of this ordinance specifically for the release of balloons into, into the atmosphere. I just took a look at Mass General Law, 260, Section 16 on littering. And it goes into specifics about littering, but there's nothing about balloons. There's nothing about the release of balloons. So maybe our state representative, maybe we could advocate for our state representative that Mass General Law be amended to include the release of balloons. Specific, and that would cover it, cover all of Massachusetts. So not only are we doing our part as a community, we're also enhancing it by trying to advocate it statewide, which I cannot imagine any other community being against it. Thank you.
Thank you. If we get back to public comment, please come up and if you so choose to state your name. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather Sacks. I own Happy Joy Balloons. And I actually do a lot of work here in the city of Salem for businesses that, you know, they, they use the balloons as a way to invite people in and draw attention to their business. Most are not outdoors. All of them are weighted. And I believe us as artists and as balloon professionals, we will never promote the intentional, unintentional, or negligent release of balloons. And we do a lot of education within our communities to prevent that as well as proper disposal of those balloons. And we're trying to do more and come together as professionals to create a group to educate the public. So I just wanted to say, number one, you would be impacting a ton of women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses and families that rely on this income. And again, businesses in general in the area that do rely on that just, that bright, you know, balloon that makes everyone so happy and just draws them into that window. So we, we as professionals are really doing all we can to be environmentally friendly and really educate our clients on how to properly just dispose the balloons, weight the balloons. And again, none of our things are ever unweighted, so.
Thank you. I have a question for you concerning when you guys do go to a client to, and just to make this happen, do you guys inflate onsite or offsite and bring them to both? So what this ordinance effectively would be doing is we're not restricting you from inflating onsite as a business.
The helium would not be affected onsite is what you're.
Onsite, no.
Okay.
If you're buying your own tank and you're filling up your own balloons, indoors.
Indoor.
Indoors, indoors.
Okay.
So that would not be affected.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
My name is Carolina and I own Fairy Tale Moments Events, also your balloon lady. I'm located in Swamscott. So I prepared something directly based on the original writing. And then I just made some notes based on what we learned here. So I'm going to read this anyway, even if some of it's not pertinent and then just make a couple of comments if that's okay. So instead of a ban, I think collectively we'd like to talk about alternatives and how we can come together to address the environmental concerns, yet continue to allow the community to, excuse me, community to their continued enjoyment of balloons. A balloon ban would be detrimental to many businesses, especially small businesses, which are largely minority and women-owned, as you can see represented here today. Not only would this affect businesses directly dealing with balloons, but other event-related services and business. For example, the event planners, restaurants, event venues, halls, anywhere that hosts events and it's also putting an additional task for them to monitor what's happening in their venues. People would continue to likely use balloons anyway. And if not, they will host their events outside of Salem. Banning balloons may lead to the unintentional consequence of people turning to less environmentally friendly alternatives such as plastic decorations or materials that generate more waste. Enforcement of a balloon ban would come with many challenges and would be very, very difficult to enforce. Ultimately banning balloons would have a ripple effect negatively impacting residents of Salem, businesses in and out of Salem, and also affecting the revenue generated in and for Salem. You know, not so long ago, we were the ones delivering all the joy during the time that we were all stuck at home. Couldn't go see our friends, couldn't go celebrate our birthdays with our family. We got to bring that joy and a sense of normalness, right? Being able to celebrate. So we, as has been stated collectively as balloon professionals, we absolutely do not advocate for balloon releases. We are adamant about not ever even providing balloons for releases. We promote education. We educate our clients. And continuing to do that, we can help clients who use our balloons to dispose of them properly, use them properly and understand, understand the impact of not doing so. So I also just had, so as has already been stated as well, so limiting sales in Salem isn't going to stop people buying them and they will inflate them themselves. They will, they will absolutely do it themselves. So when that happens, what you're inadvertently allowing is someone not having the opportunity to speak to one of the balloon professionals to say, do not release these balloons. And we do that in many ways. Many of us have pamphlets that we provide information, information on our websites, things that we hand out with our balloon deliveries so that clients have it in writing as we're saying it. So allowing retailers and professionals the opportunity to continue to make sure that weight is attached so when they go to the car, even when they drop the balloons because the kid is going, right? It's going to fall on the floor because they're all tied together in a nice little bouquet. It will go to, right to the floor instead of up in the sky. So limiting outdoor may be an option. We understand that now this is about helium and outdoors, which is of course better than a total ban, but we are still encouraging limiting balloon releases, banning balloon releases and promoting education and encouraging and requiring the use of weights and those similar methods. And then I just had a graphic here. If anybody wants to look at this from 2019 from the postal cleanup. And there's, and for many years I have several of these. Balloons are not on, on these lists. And I had contact with this agency and based on their information, in 2009, the postal cleanup, they recorded less than, I'm sorry, accounted for 1.04% of the total debris collected balloons did. And in 2011, that numbered decreased. As the years, and now we're 12 years later. So as the years have gone out, we have continued as a community to promote the education and the environmental impact and have decreased that number further as we can see these are the more dangerous items.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you for everyone coming in tonight to share your perspective on this. This is why we have these meetings because we do not want to affect smaller businesses, women-owned businesses in general. And that's why we're deliberate on this. So I really appreciate you guys all coming in and sharing your thoughts with us because we really want to get this right. And we don't want to hurt small businesses. We just want to make sure we're doing this correctly. So I appreciate that. And I do agree, we do have a lot of work to do on this ordinance and how to craft it mindfully so that we're tackling our environmental situation and as well as, you know, not restricting the use of something that would eventually hurt our residents here. Any more public comment, please?
Hi, my name is Christine Bernstein. This year I'll be celebrating 40 years in the balloon industry as a balloon decorator. So thank you for hearing all this tonight. And some of this, I'll reiterate what's already been said, but your own words were, you know, you use the word ceremoniously for balloon releases earlier. And that is what it is, you know, and someone, if it's ceremonious, you're picturing a wedding or some other event, even a funeral, for example. And my colleagues were correct in saying that we are really working on educating individuals. I had a customer in my shop the other day, nothing, when people leave with the balloon bouquet, it's in a plastic bag. My customers will even bring their plastic bags back for reuse. They even brought their weight back to me the other day. And to the issue of litter, the state might have a law, but there's litter everywhere. So really I feel like as a group, the balloon industry actually does more educating than the government in terms of litter. You know, why is it allowed? If you go out to California, they ticket you for littering. I'd love to see that here as well. But we, we are really working on that as an industry. And you also mentioned it's about the act of releasing balloons and that's true. And there is the issue of accidental release, but the idea of having a balloon weight is something that will reduce that as well as containing them in containers when they leave our business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from Counselor Cohen? Yeah, I know. Anybody else? Janelle, please? And after that, we have two people on Zoom would like to speak as well. And then I will get to you, sir.
I didn't introduce myself and explain my background. So I know many of these faces in this room. Prior to working with the city, I, as a hobby, conducted monthly cleanups through Keep Salem Beautiful. And during these monthly cleanups, balloons are often an item found, especially in many of our coastal parks such as Forest River, The Willows, Winter Island and Palmer Cove. So this has always been on the forefront of my mind, litter in general. Yes, I will wholeheartedly agree is a problem. And balloons in Salem are, especially being a tourist community, we, we also face heightened amounts of litter. And during this time of year, we have additional balloons because it's a time of celebration. In my role with the city, I conduct bin checks for recycling totes, looking for contaminants. I often find balloons in recycling bins. So yes, there needs to be a lot more education on the do's and don'ts of recycling. And especially since A, balloons aren't recyclable and B, they act as tanglers at the material recovery facility that processes all of the recyclables. And they clog up the machines and potentially put human beings in harm's way when they have to cut out tanglers. So I think this is a wonderful discussion, you know, hearing everyone's perspectives. I don't know if this has been entertained prior to this conversation, but outdoor spaces like Forest River and The Willows, would it be possible to somehow like implement a ban in these locations? Since they are so close to the ocean.
If I may, I did have a conversation with the Chair of the Swamscott Conservation Commission and they have enacted a policy at Lynn Scott Park pertaining to balloons. So it is possible and there's other cities and towns in our areas that are actively doing these things.
Thank you.
Hi, Heather Sacks from Happy Joy Balloons again. As to the Conservation Committee in Swamscott, we actually did work with them to talk about Mylar and the use of latex and how they should be weighted and we compromised. So I do believe, you know, number one, there needs to be a conversation if you are to implement a banning in certain areas. And then number two, I am curious as to whether or not the tangling is of string or is it actual balloon? The string, yeah. So many of our artistry does not necessarily need string as well. So that would be an interesting topic to, to discuss.
Awesome, thank you. We'll go to Zoom land here. Shutish, if I allow you to speak. You can unmute yourself if you can.
Hello, how can you hear me over?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. From my own, the youngest generation of politicians of the population, I'm basically the leader of our population. We may be teaching commonly about, you know, the balloons are released and the people don't really know. We publicly, we don't, we don't release them. They're not, we protect that position. And we are also pushing, you know, the industry that we are decorating, we're there for, for our generation. You know, we're educating a lot of the people who are decorating, for product and for the, for the impact, not just for the new, for the world. So our way of making the manufacturing and distribution, and we will, without collectively, you know, discuss what we're giving to get, to give you probably better apartment in their project. And we see, you see a civilian on the, on the way to the room, while, you know, every sort of path, and you think also that, you know, we work with a lot of the states and local businesses on that, but we will keep, in, probably very many opportunities that we should, to get that language right. And one thing, you know, everybody loves the environment. Everybody wants to head up. So for example, you know, I am someone who, I mean, the gathering of all sorts of everything. And when you push back, you, you, um, things are off the deck. We almost lack any words in my head. Very hard to put words in my head. We might just be, for my, my, and we've already paid it to you. That's, that's hopefully from the, you know, will soon be recognized out of the, you know. Okay, so let me, just thank you, Anthony, for the opportunity to, to have a place.
Thank you. We appreciate your comment. Next, we'll allow Christian Day.
Governor, give me a second. I'm going to tap in here. Thank you, Norm Wright.
We can hear you, Mr. Day.
Give me just a moment. I want to, the initiative, hold on, hold on. I know what it is. Hold on. Am I here?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Okay, good. I have an audio thing louder and a little harder hearing, but apparently that turned the microphone into something else. So anyway, thank you all. This has been very enlightening. I host the official Salem, which is Halloween Ball in the big weekend every October. And one of the, Patty, Terrell spoke earlier, is our balloon art. And one of the reasons that we went with balloons in the very beginning was because I was always very cognizant of waste. And because on a Halloween event like this is themed, in order to create any sort of thematic, each year you'd be creating something that was ultimately disposable. Because if you are seeing this year is the Vikings and you have the giant Viking shirt on, you can't do the next year if it's even blist, don't. But, and so the idea is that the balloons, when they are plas, they fill less than a gallon, probably not even that. Now, I've spoken with Patty by text earlier, and she did say that all of our balloons are air-filled. So that naturally the question, so are we sure that's not going to be an issue? Because I guess that's my main concern.
Yes.
And also, I wanted to speak to Counselor Watson's point about, I do, you know, I do wonder that if you allow, you know, if you say, oh, well, if you fill the balloons yourself. I don't necessarily think a lot of people would necessarily go to fill the balloons themselves, but it does sort of feel like there'd be a loophole there in some way for businesses to do that. Exactly wasn't concerned. And the environmental side of this is a concern for me. And I spoke with Laura Stavopoulos from probably the corner of cheese, the head of Salem State Farm. And so she expressed, you know, that this was very much a concern for her as our firework. And we're impacted by dogs and animals. And so, you know, I really want to support this. I just want to make sure that, you know, like Herr Paul Roslinski pointed out, who's already got a law for such inside? You know, is that a good thing necessary? And if we're going to do it, I want to make sure everything is crystal clear so there's not a loophole that, you know, because, well, you can't have the air filled or, you know, I don't know. I think most of the balloons Patty makes are on site, but some of them may be brought. So naturally, my concern in all of this is the waste. Because if I have to start seeding every year and I can't use balloons, I am sure to create a whole lot more additional waste every year. And much of it will be plas. And I would love to say, oh, in the name of the environment, I'm not going to seed my ball. But then I'm disappointing the visitors who come back year after year to Salem and to my events. So, you know, really creating another. And, you know, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Day. And just to answer your question as far as where the consensus at the committee is, I believe that when it comes to the conversation of restricting balloons that are filled with air, that's something we're absolutely going to be removing going forward. This is about helium-filled balloons. Thank you for your comment. Counselor Cohen?
Yeah, thanks, Chair Verella. I mean, I think we have a lot of work. I feel very much that, you know, potentially requiring weighted might make a difference. But I do want to make a couple of points because I'm not really going to support an ordinance that doesn't have an impact. You know, I'm grateful to be in a room with so many balloon professionals, very honored. And you all seem very responsible. But we have a lot of balloon fragments all over the beaches and everything that are really adversely affecting the environment. So, you know, this idea that we're going to punish the person who is releasing the balloon, I just have like this image of our newly hired balloon cop chasing down a five-year-old on the common and tackling them. And I don't know if they really know what $50 is. So I don't know if that's going to work. I really feel like anytime you want to address pollution, you have to do it at the source. You have to really almost do it at the manufacturer level. You know, we have a single-use plastic because we've allowed manufacturers to make single-use plastic, and that is horrendous for the environment. So I don't know if this makes sense to move to keep it in committee. Is that your intention?
Yes, I will take a couple more questions from counselors. But yeah, you know what? After this lengthy discussion, there's a lot more to unravel here because we don't want to punish especially our businesses that are trying to do this responsibly. But furthermore, when it comes to just trash and trash in general, the conversation over the last 40 years plus has been bigger businesses are lobbying that basically the end user is responsible for the trash. We need to get away from that conversation and that likeness that it really comes down to, you know, who's responsible? Is the manufacturer responsible or is it the end user? And I believe it's a little bit of both, but mostly that manufacturer should be responsible for the pollution and waste that is created by a product. And so we have to get away from that thinking that the end user is responsible for the trash. Counselor Watson felt, then Counselor McLean, then Counselor Merkel.
This meeting is endless. Jesus. I, in spirit, I second Counselor Cohen's motion to keep this in committee because clearly there's a lot more to conversation to be had. But I do think that it would be irresponsible not to comment on your point, which I generally agree with, that I think that somewhere, that the responsibility does lie in both places. And the issue that I have with enforcement around releasing helium balloons is that once that helium balloon is released, it is done. Right? It is, I don't care if the fee is $300. I don't care if the fee is 29 cents. The reality is, when we get to the point where the balloon is gone, the balloon is gone. And that is counterproductive and counterintuitive to the intent of this conversation. So though I definitely think people should be fined for doing it if they're doing it on purpose and we've all told them and educated them not to be doing it, then like, yes, that they should, there should be some consequence. But I think to your point, we do need to figure out how to get upstream, right, which I believe Counselor McLean said earlier as well. So I just wanted to say that out loud because I, like, it's the same with littering, right? Like, I love that there's a littering law, but the reality is the litter is litter is litter and it's done. And unfortunately, in this case, the litter cannot be reclaimed, right? We can't be picked up. So that's all I wanted to say. I definitely would love to continue working on this. I have a lot of, I have a lot of thoughts about this. And I definitely would love to continue to work it in committee if you're amenable to keeping it here. Thanks.
I guess just a point of clarification. Did we actually have a motion to keep this in committee that was seconded? Is that what happened just now that's on the table?
Unofficially, but yeah.
No, I'm looking for like that official, official, yeah.
Second then. Is that, was that official motion, Counselor? Then yes, then my second was official.
So then I would, I would, I would, I would like to, I guess respectfully request that we hear any remaining public comment from folks that we haven't heard from and then move that question. Is there like anybody remaining?
I don't see anyone in Zoom land. Anyone else from the audience would like to talk? So after really talking about this, sorry, Counselor Mer- I'm sorry, do you have more to say?
Absolutely not. I would like to move the question of keeping this in committee.
Thank you. Before I get to you, Counselor Merkel, I just want to let everyone know, what's up?
He procedurally moved the question. We need to vote on it.
Yep, okay, all right. Well, before that, I'd like, Counselor Merkel, do you have something to say? Okay, all right. So we will take a hand vote that this matter remain in committee. All those in favor? All those opposed? That is four hands plus my own. The matter carries. Thank you, everyone. We have a lot of work to do with that. I'd like to take another motion. Counselor Merkel, motion to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Watson felt. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time.